Good evening, welcome. I'm Whitney Sweeney, President of the State Board of Education. We are very excited to co-host the meeting today with the Department of Education and are looking forward to our conversation. We are providing information on Delaware's accelerated learning plan. Am I getting, okay, sorry, I thought I heard something strange in the background. And the background and research behind using acceleration strategy. This is a public we're going to run through just, you know, standard statement that we need to do before we get started. But we are really excited, not only about the agenda that we have in front of us and the speakers that are here tonight, Dr. Grant and Dr. David Steiner, but also the turnout that we've had on a Monday night at 5:00. So thank you very much for being here tonight, keeping an eye and then get right to what we're here to do tonight. So I call the March 29 session of the State Board of Education to order. It is 5:02 PM. This meeting is being held electronically. March 12, 2020, Governor Carney issued a declaration of a state of emergency for the state of Delaware due to a public health threat. The state of emergency allows all public meetings of the executive branch, public bodies to be conducted electronically, either by means of telephone conference call or the conference call. The information regarding the meeting, including information on how to access the meeting electronically, were published 22/21 on the state public meeting calendar site. Individuals may participate in this meeting via the go-to webinar URL or the telephone conference call number. Thank you for your patience should be running into any technology issues along the way. So tonight, as I said, we are here to talk about accelerated learning. And I think this should be coming up on our, on the screen just a minute, the agenda and what we're going to cover today. Jen, if you could flip ahead, I think it's going to come up just what we're going to cover. But essentially what we're going to run through tonight, a brief overview of the Department of Education's strategy to accelerate learning. We have a presentation on addressing English learning through acceleration with Dr. David Steiner. We're invited to welcome here tonight, looking forward to hearing our insights. And then we're going to have an opportunity for Q and A and then the next steps. And actually, I'm sorry, we may be, okay, can people hear me? I'm getting like red messages across the top of my screen. And so hopefully people can hear me. Can one person chime in?
Yes, we can hear you.
Does that mean no one can hear me?
We can hear you.
Dr. Grant, if you could raise, can you see me, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, I can't tell if anyone can hear me or not. So I'm gonna, with that, I'm going to hopefully try to pass directly to Dr. Grant and maybe you can hear her. I will say, there's one thing, as we're talking, if you are having questions as we go through the presentation, could you take one more time and get right into the meat of this and hear from Dr. Grant and Dr. Steiner? Questions, can you just type them into the chat box? And with that, Dr. Grant, I'm going to go ahead and give it to you.
Sounds great, thank you so much. Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to join us for our webinar on supporting accelerating learning for Delaware students featuring Dr. David Steiner. My name is Monica Gant and I am the Associate Secretary of the Academic Support Team for the Delaware Department of Education. I am pleased to share the Department of Education's strategy to accelerate learning for students across the state. We have engaged with researchers, national partners, and state education agencies across the country to develop a statewide approach to learning acceleration for Delaware students. We have also identified ways in which you can join us in our efforts to provide cohesive and consistent, high-quality curriculum to support student acceleration. So this evening I will share why we've chosen to focus on acceleration, our state strategy for accelerating learning for students, including four core actions required of districts and charters for effective implementation, and the key components that support the four actions. I will then end with a review of the resources that we plan to provide. So if you can switch to the next slide, please. And you can go on to the next one. So to establish a common understanding for the terms that I will use this evening, please use these definitions to engage in this presentation. First, acceleration, increased opportunities to access great level content. So you'll hear us talk a lot about acceleration. Then I'll jump down to the bottom, unfinished teaching and learning. Any prerequisite knowledge or skills that students need for standards level work they don't have yet. We prefer this term because it inspires action rather than focusing on student deficit. You'll hear us talk about high dosage tutoring, which is frequent and consistent, data-driven tutoring delivered by trained tutors in a one-to-one or very small group setting with a goal of accessing great level standards. You'll hear us talk about HQIM, high-quality instructional materials, which are comprehensive materials that are aligned with the Delaware content standards, written with clear purpose, effective lesson structure, and pacing to provide equitable access to great level content. Rated reading by Ed Reports, which is our reviewers of instructional materials. You hear us talk a little bit about OERs, open ed resources, which are free, high-quality instructional materials online. As well as the science of reading, the research that reading experts, especially cognitive scientists, have conducted on how we learn to read. And then finally, we'll reference summer booster, summer intensive, which is what we're referring to, the accelerated student learning for the summer. For the next slide, please. It's first important to know that our mission at the Delaware Department of Education is to empower every learner with the highest quality education through shared leadership, innovative practices, and exemplary services. Our instructional vision is that every student in Delaware will leave school ready for college, career, and life. To that end, teachers must provide students with high-quality, standards-aligned instruction every day. And district and school leaders must provide teachers with standards-aligned instructional materials and high-quality professional learning. Next slide. Our instructional vision is the foundation of our approach to student learning during COVID. As we look to research during this unprecedented time, Ed Research for Recovery has published briefs referencing research to ground discussion about how to best serve students during and following the coronavirus pandemic. The central question of the first brief identifies which areas schools should prioritize for intensive academic intervention and what strategies are most effective. Next slide, please. When breaking down this issue, researchers have found that students who are most likely to fall out of range for their grade are students who were struggling before the pandemic, as well as students in primary grades. There are also some findings that losses are likely to be larger in math than ELA, but math losses will potentially be more responsive to additional support. It is important to note that remedial offerings that crowd out poor instruction tend to be ineffective, while high dosage tutoring can substantially accelerate learning in both math and reading for most struggling students. Extended learning time, opportunity staff with highly effective teachers show strong evidence of effectiveness. Next slide, please. Although COVID-19 has disrupted students' experiences this school year, our teachers, school leaders, school support staff, and school communities continue to provide students with opportunities to learn while also caring for students' physical, social, and emotional needs. Despite a disruptive year, DOE has focused on shifting the narrative from learning loss to unfinished learning, teaching and learning, and from remediation to acceleration to promote action grounded in a growth mindset. Next, please. To align our resources with this mindset and our instructional vision, we have developed this Delaware strategy to accelerate learning focused on four core actions. First, adoption and use of high-quality instructional materials to bring coherence and consistency to a district or charter's instructional vision and academic planning. Second, initial and ongoing professional learning for school leaders and teachers focused on providing tier-one instruction to all students, including understanding how to diagnose and address student learning needs. Third, leveraging data by implementing a balanced assessment system specifically with formatives that support teachers in diagnosing unfinished learning and providing the scaffolds needed to ensure all students have access to great level instruction. And then finally, creating support structures to accelerate student learning within the context of high-quality instructional materials. So for example, summer learning acceleration, extended school day and year, high dosage tutoring, and refinement of acceleration policies. Those four actions are based on the key components or foundation of the Delaware strategy to accelerate learning, and they include systems and structures designed to support acceleration of learning, high-quality instructional materials and content which provide equitable access to great level content for all students, leveraging data to diagnose unfinished teaching and learning to clearly identify what students know, what they don't know, and what they need to know to access great level content, planning for a growth mindset of acceleration and not remediation, ensuring equitable access to great level content for all students, especially those who have been historically marginalized, and professional learning for both teachers and leaders to ensure that supportive systems and content knowledge is in place to support learning acceleration. Next, please. Based on our instructional vision for actions and those key components, the Department of Education is committed to providing Delaware public schools with resources to support student learning acceleration for students focused on rising first through eighth graders in literacy and mathematics this summer. Those resources include for rising first through sixth graders, literacy professional learning and core high-quality instructional materials, summer booster content, based on the science of reading for those districts and charters with high-quality instructional materials as their core curriculum, and those open ed resources for those who do not currently have access to strongly sequenced high-quality instructional materials as their core literacy resource. Second, student access to an online text repository for all Delaware public school students. Third, access to Zern Math Summer Intensive licenses for all rising first through eighth graders and the professional learning that accompanies that. And then finally, high dosage tutoring seats for multiple grades. Next, please. So why rising first through sixth graders? Preliminary data has shown that unfinished teaching and learning for our youngest readers has been profoundly magnified, especially in marginalized communities, and students need to be taught to read based on the cognitive science. We also know that high-quality instructional materials are an equity move and a key lever in giving students a systematic and explicit reading foundational skills and experience. Next, please. For these reasons, DOE will provide literacy professional learning supported by the science of reading concepts for Delaware public school educators, summer boost core high-quality instructional materials content for acceleration aligned with district resources, and student access to online text repository. We are building professional learning to teach literacy based on the science of reading using high-quality instructional materials in an accelerated summer program. Next, please. We will also provide every public school student in the state of Delaware access to the Sora online repository, which is set up so that districts and charters would be given a student allowance that would give students access to books from their high-quality instructional materials book list, including the location of all of the books and publishing permissions. Districts and charters can monitor a data dashboard that shows how many books each student reads and how long students spend reading. Access to the school-facing app, which also houses a Delaware Public Libraries collection, meaning that every public school student in Delaware would have immediate access to not only their school's ebook library collection, but also the ebook library collection of every Delaware public library without needing a library card. This also means that students can access ebooks in all settings, including community centers. Next, please. Our third resource is Zern's Math Summer Intensive Series. Zern is rated green on Ed Reports as a high-quality mathematics instructional material with a strong digital learning component. The Summer Intensive Series for all elementary and middle school students, and it leverages the essential mathematics content students should know before starting grades one through eight. So why Zern? Zern has a summer intensive that can be used flexibly across summer school models and tutoring programs. It has instructional resources that can be used by teachers and tutors to build deep understanding of concepts and flexible problem-solving skills. And it has a family resource center with explanations of key mathematics terms such as at-home activities and tips for supporting children with digital lesson completion. Next, please. To support schools with mathematics acceleration, the DOE will provide Delaware public schools unlimited access to Zern Math Summer Intensive for Summer 2021. The Summer Intensive Series has 30-minute daily lessons for 12 weeks or two a day, 60 minutes for six weeks, and is designed to catch students up on mathematics learning and build a strong foundation for next year. It has embedded accessibility features to support English learners and students with disabilities, daily diagnostics that assess each student's understanding. It's adaptive and automatically launches support. And then 24/7 digital student mathematics platform with daily digital lessons with fluency, concept development, and independent practice with built-in math help. And finally, unlimited access for all students, teachers, and schools. Next, please. So Zern professional learning will provide support in launching the right implementation model for the districts and charters and equip school leaders and teachers to maximize their usage. Professional learning will support with integrating Zern's summer school and tutoring programs and effectively communicating guidance and tools to families and educators for independent use. Our final resource focuses on providing high dosage tutoring specifically to those most struggling students. We know the research behind high dosage tutoring as one of the few school-based interventions with demonstrated positive effects on both math and reading achievement. As a reminder, high dosage tutoring is frequent and consistent data-driven tutoring delivered by trained tutors in a one-to-one or very small group setting and the goal, with the goal of accessing great level standards. To support schools with literacy and math acceleration, the DOE will seek high dosage tutoring partners for Summer 2021 to support the most struggling students. While we are seeking retired teachers and pre-service teachers to support literacy, we are providing Zern Math training for adults to support students' use of the math program since all rising first through eighth graders will have digital access to the math program in all settings. DOE can provide training to current community organization staff as requested. Next, please. In summary, the Department of Education is committed to accelerating learning for students by providing support to Delaware public schools in literacy and mathematics this summer. Our litmus test for the resources that we are providing is based on the four core actions of the Delaware strategy to accelerate learning, which serves as our guide. It should be very apparent that our approach is grounded in four core actions. High-quality instructional materials, professional learning, leveraging data, creating supportive structures that accelerate student learning, and by providing these resources to support learning acceleration, we will make literacy and mathematics resources, professional learning, and high dosage tutoring easily accessible to all public schools in the Delaware, in the state of Delaware. So thank you again for the opportunity to share our strategic approach to learning acceleration for students across our state. Please feel free to reach out to me or Kathy Kelly, the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Professional Development, for more information. Thank you for allowing us to share that, and we will turn it back over to Whitney.
Great, thank you very much. And as a reminder to anyone who has questions, because we are going to have a Q and A at the end, so make sure that you're putting them into the chat box, because even if we don't get to the call, we'll make sure that we can follow up with you after. So thank you for that, Dr. Grant. And now we are going to move into our next presentation of the night, addressing unfinished learning through acceleration. And we're very pleased to welcome Dr. David Steiner here with us this evening. Dr. Steiner is the Director of Johns Hopkins Institute for Education Policy and Professor of Education at the Johns Hopkins University. He's previously served on the Maryland State Board of Education, the Maryland Commission for Innovation and Excellence in Education, and as the Commissioner of Education for New York State, among many other notable accomplishments. He comes to Delaware with a wealth of experience in curriculum and instruction and education policy. So welcome, Dr. Steiner, and thanks so much for joining us tonight.
Thank you so much, Whitney, and thank you, Dr. Grant. Grant, it's a pleasure to be here and a delight to be in touch again with your colleagues across Delaware. I was privileged to spend time in your state, particularly with your math teachers and curriculum directors in mathematics. So without further ado, let's plunge straight in, next slide. We want to get a sense of the challenges we all face. I know we've heard a lot about learning loss because of the tragedy of COVID. The best data we have comes from Curriculum Associates, a very large testing company. They tested students across the country, over a million of them, this past winter. And this is just a snapshot to give us a sense of what's going on. As you can see, the impact has been especially difficult on underprivileged children, children of color. If we look at the right-hand segment at the bottom, children who are in schools that are more than 50% African-American have lost about, oh, a good 14% of them now not on grade level, who would have been on grade level with COVID out of the picture. Putting it another way, we already had a serious problem, of course. 30% on grade level, now 16%. This is at grade three. Why grade three? Because it is the first grade where we are assessing across the states, and it is a gateway for the work that comes next. You can see that the impact on mathematics learning is more dramatic than on ELA. And indeed, across the country, students are doing a little better in ELA than in math. However, I should caution that these data are optimistic. Why? Because they tested children who'd come back to school in the winter, and that's disproportionately somewhat better off students than would be true for a national average. So you can take these already rather difficult numbers as the absolute most optimistic reading of what's happened. I suspect when we get a final reading, it'll be even more challenging than what I'm showing you. Next slide. Faced with disproportionate achievement among our students, we've attempted to do three things as a nation. As you well know, we have tried to retain students. That didn't work. We've tried to socially promote them, that is, move them forward no matter what their achievement levels, or we've remediated them. Very frankly, without going into lots of dull detail, not one of these three strategies has worked. Whether it's in New York, where I served in the State Department, whether it's our work at Hopkins, whether it's national research, gap closure has not happened, and none of these three things have helped. Next slide. So what is it about acceleration that is different? Imagine that instead of trying to go backwards with children to stuff they didn't learn a year ago, two years ago, with materials that by definition were written for younger children, for children who are chronologically younger. What does that do? That depresses the student, that tells her or him that they are in that different group, that their peers are going to keep marching ahead of them and they're going to go backwards. That's not working. So acceleration says we can't necessarily teach them everything that is at grade level. After all, by definition, they are behind, and sometimes quite far behind. But what we can do is focus on some key learning skills and knowledge and do everything we can to prepare them so that they can stay with their grade-level peers and at grade-level learning on key learning targets. So it is a strategy of just-in-time instruction that really is essential to keep those children up to speed on specific key learning goals. Next slide. Very quickly, because this will be clear to all of you, there's a fundamental difference in approach here. It's not just a shift from drilling on a whole panoply of stuff that was never learned and the failure, frankly, that is built into that approach. But it is also a psychological difference on the part of teachers. It is to say that the key focus is get everybody to the same start line for Monday morning's lesson in math or in ELA. Don't try to fill in vast amounts of unlearned material. It won't happen, and it won't work. But you have to believe that those students who missed a lot of material and a lot of mastery are necessarily capable of catching up as long as you don't overwhelm them by trying to teach them everything. Okay, next slide. What's the evidence for everything I'm saying? Well, we have quite a bit of it. Without going again into lots of detail, when we give students of color who are underprivileged real grade-level work, access to grade-level work, you might think, well, they're going to get worse, they're going to get more far behind. No, on the contrary, by challenging them, by telling them they can do this work, by telling them they're staying with their peers, we accelerate their learning. The same thing is true of all students who are substantially below grade level. If we give them that grade-level material, that rigorous HQIM material, they will make progress. By the way, this is true of six-year-olds and 18-year-olds and 20-year-olds. We can talk later about this, but the data is the same whether it's community college or elementary school. The psychological impact of remediation is universally negative, and acceleration, well done, does work. Next slide. This is from TNTP data, these two slides. And essentially, what they're saying is that two things combined make an enormous difference. First of all, if you actually hold students to that higher standard of assignments, grade-level HQIM assignments, and at the same time, and this is crucial, and I mentioned it a moment ago, you as teachers and administrators have the expectation that those children can meet those assignments, can manage them, right? Then you have an enormous impact on student learning. It is, of course, important that teachers are effective. Look, we know this. The single biggest impact on student performance inside schools is, of course, teacher skills at teaching. But a huge part of that skill set, that's what this graphic is showing, are those grade-level assignments and those expectations. Next slide. So the key idea is to get a mindset on the part of instruction that is quite simple and very difficult to do completely well. And I don't want to be Pollyannaish about this. It is much easier for me to sit here and lay this out than for teachers to do it in practice every day. The key point here is this, ask yourself the question. Is what I'm doing with these children, wherever I'm doing it, whether it's response to intervention, whether it's tutoring, whether it's pull-out, whether it's differentiation in class, and we'll come back to these techniques, is it going to get these students back to grade level in their central courses of ELA and math? That is the governing question. If it isn't, if it is out of some feeling that, oh my goodness, they missed all of that stuff two years ago, unless it's a need-to-know basis, we don't have time, your students don't have time, they need access to their grade-level material. Next slide. This is very optimistic, but this is sort of the gold standard, if you will, that 75% of the assignments of all our students should be grade-appropriate. And that doesn't matter whether they are on IEPs or from very disadvantaged backgrounds or even Ls. The group of international schools, they're called international schools in New York City, serving very underprivileged children who have English very much as a second language. They are first-generation immigrants, refuses to remediate. They will not dumb down materials. They will instead scaffold like heck to get those materials accessible for their students. So that is, that is the gold standard, 75% of assignments. We can talk a bit about how you self-monitor against that goal. Next slide. We've talked already about the question of HQIM. I know that in your districts, you're making great strides to bring this in. It's not the easiest thing to do. I've been working with states, including Delaware, through CCSSO for several years on this challenge of bringing in HQIM to your classrooms. We really do feel that this is a game changer. We've analyzed many of the existing curriculum, and they truly aren't helping teachers, let alone students, to master complex grade-level material. The best curriculum like Zern, for example, really don't just teach students. To be very frank with you, they also teach us, they teach the teachers. They give us the support, the tips, the suggested interventions that bring the concepts to life, that make them work in mathematics, that give access to complex texts in ELA. If you don't yet have a grade level covered by HQIM, it's really important to look at those grade-level assignments. I say this because of really devastating, in my view, research that we've been part of, that Rand has been part of, that shows that about 96% of America's public school teachers are curating their curriculum as they go along, meaning they're pulling off Pinterest, Google, teachers pay teachers, with the best intention, right, of meeting their students where they are. What we know about this is two things. One, no school of education, no teacher preparation program, not one in the United States, as far as I'm aware, has ever prepared future teachers to do that for the skills of trying to self-curate out of the internets billion possibilities a coherent, structured curriculum. a coherent, structured curriculum. Number two, 80%, roughly, of those materials that are self-curated are below grade level. 80%. So what we're doing is massively under-teaching our students in the United States of America, and we're doing it every day. And every child, depending on which classroom they're sitting in, they're getting a different curated curriculum, and it's the luck of the draw whether the teacher has the innate skills to make that coherent and logically progressing, and covering the crucial knowledge build that we know is necessary for good results in reading comprehension. All of that is up in the air. HQIM materials at their best really do replace this with rigorous materials of high quality that are worth teaching. When Meryl Streep says, I'm going to act in this movie, she doesn't say, I refuse to do so because I didn't write the script. Her skills are those of an actress. The teacher's skills are those of teaching. Constructing curriculum is a completely different professional set of skills. And very frankly, there isn't the time for teachers to try to do that, although they do, six to nine hours a week often, on top of really preparing to teach effectively. We have to change that mindset, and HQIM is part of that change. So plan either around your existing HQIM or where you don't yet have implementation. Really pressure-test your existing curriculum. Find out what your teachers are actually doing. We at Hopkins have a survey, instructional use survey, that we put into the field for many states because it shows district leaders the truth, which is that in most cases, teachers are not using the district curriculum for its more rigorous aspects and are substituting other stuff that brings the level down. It's not necessarily the happiest of news, but it is really important for professionals to understand what's happening in their classrooms. Next slide. As I said, this is not the norm, this high-quality materials teaching. Many of you have seen the Opportunity Myth Report. It's probably the most dispiriting report that I've seen, but I have to react to it as a spur to action, not to despair. It has to say to us, we are not going to keep doing this. We're not going to keep giving materials to underprivileged children such that they'll never make up the lost ground. By the way, a fairly large percentage of underprivileged children, and this is a terrible thing to say, never get access, not once in their school career, to grade-level materials. This, by the way, explains why here in Baltimore, where I'm speaking to you from, even given the extraordinary efforts of Sonia Sontelis, a terrific superintendent and her team, we still have schools where not one student is proficient in math for ELA. They probably haven't seen grade-level materials. The will and the courage to bring them up to speed is what we all need. And it really is a national emergency, and an emergency in every state. I spoke about assessing your existing materials. There are tools for that. You see one on the screen, the IMET tool. We can help, others can help. Just let me know if you have questions about whether your materials are at grade level, how to actually examine whether teachers are teaching those materials rigorously, because you can take any material and dumb it down, and that is the other problem. Teachers will, by habit, not because they want to damage children, they never do, they want to help them always, but by habit, when they see something that they think is too tough, they will water it down. And that creates a cycle of lower and lower performance. Next slide. So we haven't helped, very frankly, in administration and policy. I want to be very frank about that. This has been a huge failure, partly for financial reasons. And we have some hope that with some funds coming through now after COVID, there may be some help on the way. But nationally, what we've done is we've put in these better curriculum, and then we've done one day and a breakfast, frankly, of professional development. Now, think about that for a moment. You've got teachers who, on average across the nation, will have been in the schools for over a decade. A decade's worth of professional practice, and you want to change that practice because of six hours of PD. It's not going to happen. They are not going to believe that this is doable unless there's continuous support, observation, feedback, and more support. It is not easy to believe that children who are a grade level or two grade levels behind can manage curriculum like ZERN, like Eureka, like CKLA, like guidebooks, like Witten Wisdom, like all of the truly good curriculum, the green-lighted Ed Reports Curriculum EL. They're not going to believe that those materials are manageable for their underprivileged students unless they get real support in using them, in giving feedback, and so forth. They need that support, otherwise it won't happen. Next slide. I said this earlier, and I hope I'm not going to be speaking out of turn. If I am, your colleagues in Delaware can blank the screen at this point. I, speaking from the research that I see, simply don't believe that we can teach all students everything on the grade-level standards for the coming year. When you combine the pre-existing gaps in their learning opportunities and what we've offered them in the past, resulting in their performance, when you combine that with COVID, if you think you're going to take a child who's two years below grade level, even a year below, and teach them everything in ZERN or Eureka or whatever it is for 2021, 22, that would take a miracle worker. What you can do is say, I'm going to do three of the six Witten Wisdom units at grade level for every student, whatever it takes. Give them that pride. Give them that sense of accomplishment and achievement. I am going to pick the crucial math skills in this year's outcomes and focus on those. And there is help. Student Assessment Partners, who are part of creating the Common Core, they've created a narrowed-down content list of key skills. There are others who've done this too. For teachers in classrooms, where getting those underperforming students up to grade level is going to be a great achievement, and to get it on, you know, half of the learning skills, if they're the right half, if they're the crucial half, that is terrific. And if there's some slippage of not hitting all of those learning targets, I would rather that that child had the experience of mastering something at her grade level in repeated instances, even if it's not the whole thing, than missing out altogether by being remediated on everything that she didn't learn. And that's a tough thing to say. Of course, we'd like everybody at that grade level in every learning target that's set out, but it just isn't going to happen. And the states are being given some leeway to not use accountability in the normal way on end-of-year assessments. We're in the real world. We've had a catastrophic situation with COVID. Let's be real. Next slide. One of the crucial things here is to know where your children are, right? We have not done this well. We've left it to teachers to sort of invent their own tests. We have MAP and I Ready, and they are useful. They are nationally normed. They do give us a broad indication of where children are in the case of MAP against their peers, in the case of I Ready more closely to a standard, the annual state standards. But really good diagnostic material is essential, whether it is from your curriculum. If it's a good curriculum, like ZERN, has diagnostics that you can use. That's why, one of the reasons it's such a strong curriculum. To something like Achieve the Core, to these diagnostics, ask tough questions. Do your teachers know where their students are on the key skills, right? If they're getting ready for whole numbers, do you know whether they have the prerequisite skills for whole numbers? If they're getting ready for algebra, do they have the crucial pre-algebraic skills, right? It is very difficult to accelerate learning if you don't know your starting point. And that is something that I can't emphasize too much. Okay, next slide. Okay, there are many sources of information. Again, I want to be real world. Not everyone has access to ZERN's curriculum in their schools, or EL, or Witten Wisdom. Not everyone is getting that I Ready data or that MAP data in ways they completely understand. Use the information you have. But again, for principals and district leaders, this is a tough question to ask. What are the sources that your teachers are using? And do they understand how to use them to pinpoint, right, where the children are relative to the key learning skills you are expecting to teach them next week and the week after, and the week after that? We've got to abhor generalities here. We've got to be granular and as precise as we can be so that the tutoring that happens, that was mentioned earlier, the response to intervention, the differentiation in class, all of that can be targeted on those crucial next learning skills. Okay, next slide. So what does all of this highfalutin talk mean in actual practice? Let's take an ELA lesson on inferences, right? Let's talk about not remediating them with lots and lots and lots of skills, but let's talk about teaching them about inferences in the context of high-quality texts in a high-quality curriculum. If inferences is the skill you're trying to teach, then forget for the moment the 20 other things that you suspect, or you even know the child in front of you didn't master, right? Just focus on that. Don't segregate them, but perhaps give that class for some time, maybe half an hour, as a whole-class instruction, and then differentiate those children to focus those who need acceleration on inference, allow others to do more advanced work, be in touch with whoever's working on RTI, be in touch with the tutors, make sure everyone's on the same page, focusing on inferences so that the students' lesson next Monday on inferences is accessible to all of them. Next slide. This is a real-world example. I changed the name, of course, of Ms. Smith. But this is a class of 22 on grade five. I've written about this. Again, can give you the reference. It's in Fordham on acceleration. But this is a real school, grade five. The diagnostic shows that on this particular set of skills of adding unlike fractions, there were 12 of the children two years behind. That is at grade three. So what did the teacher do? She didn't segue and just take those students and put them aside and tell them they're going to be remediated. She taught that grade-five concept, but she differentiated in the classroom. And the school made sure that RTI was used to supplement that differentiated instruction so that her students could master this very specific skill, a very important skill, right, of doing this and only this to this grade-level standard, adding unlike fractions at grade-five standard. That was the task. And everything was focused for those 12 students who were way behind on getting them up to that level. Next slide. We've talked about tutoring, and my colleague Bob Slaven here at Hopkins has done most of the important research, original research on this topic. I've spoken with him, written with him recently. We understand both how powerful this is and frankly, how expensive. About $2,500 a student for 15 minutes every day of the academic year. That's obviously a gold standard. That's on one-to-two tutoring. Dependent on the resources, obviously, that would be wonderful. But one-to-five, one-to-six, even one-to-seven ratios, the research shows, still has a very major impact. So let's not make the possible the enemy of the best. It isn't necessary to use certified teachers, as I say in the slide, but that training that was mentioned by your colleagues is crucial. You cannot just give someone 10 minutes on ZERN and set them loose. And this is obvious. I don't want to belabor it. But your tutoring is only as good as the preparation of the tutors. And, and this is crucial, the tie-in, the integration between what those tutors are doing and what the children are getting that day and tomorrow in their classrooms. This is a huge challenge for summer learning. I am delighted to see that Delaware is making possible the ZERN math work in summer. That work should be known by the teachers who are teaching mathematics. And if possible, the results of that summer work should be integrated into the approaches at the beginning of the school year. What I'm saying is the tighter the tie-in between learning that is not in the classroom, the regular classroom, any learning, RTI, before-school, after-school, summer, tutoring, the tighter the tie, the more impact, positive impact you're going to get from those interventions. The looser the connection, the worse the impact will be, up to and including zero. Okay, next slide. Okay, this is the last slide. I want to be real world here. I've described a challenge, a challenge that frankly would reverse decades of American educational practice. I'm being very frank with you. Remediation isn't just a word. It is deeply embedded in our educational psyches. It's deeply embedded because it is reasonable on its face. It says, meet the children where they are. The problem is that they stay there. You never have the time, and they don't have the, just the capacity to make up everything and stay or ever reach grade-level work. So we are talking about a deep reversal, but we shouldn't try for the impossible. My friends at New Classrooms, this is Joel Rose, have worked with huge computer power to try to figure out every day exactly where students are, on exactly which skills in math, and therefore exactly what should be taught to them tomorrow morning. There's some research that says this can work. I don't misunderstand me as criticizing new classrooms. They're doing very interesting work. But it can be overwhelming. It can be overwhelming to say, oh my goodness, you know, have I peeled the onion back so I know absolutely, exactly, precisely, and accurately what I have to teach today so that the child is ready tomorrow? That is not a real-world standard. What is real world is to get a sense from the best diagnostics you can use of where the focus should be, and organize your schools so that the children who need it get the support and push towards being able to manage that material. This is not always rocket science. I worked with public school teachers in Massachusetts for several years, working on very complex texts at the high school level, King Lear, The Bluest Eye with my wife. How do you get children who are two years below grade level to read The Bluest Eye, right? Or a Shakespeare play to take? Right? Or a Shakespeare play to take to very contrasting texts? You can give them the movies, more than one movie version. You can give them audiobooks or audiotapes. You can give them scaffolding which has the plot and the story. You can build so much into their runway to take off. So that when the classroom as a whole reaches that text, they have a head start. And this is the crucial point. It's not simply to say, yes, they have the skill. I think they can manage Monday's lesson and Monday's lesson is going to be rigorous and on grade level. They have the sense of a head start. They have the sense that they've been given the push, the support, the material, the know-how to be ready. It's, it's as if you're equipping them in advance and you're giving them that little nudge which says, far from pushing you backwards, I am pushing you forwards. That is the crucial issue here. If there's any message I want to leave you with, it really is to believe that this works. And that, that is not so simple. Because we all know, we have in our minds, those children who've been so short-changed, were already short-changed by society, excuse me, when they entered kindergarten. Right? Every problem we have in the United States, every challenge, social, political, economic, cultural, racial, comes home to roost at the schoolhouse door. And then we say to our educators, our education system, our teachers above all else, solve it for us. Make it go away, make it like it doesn't matter. Of course it matters. And of course, from kindergarten onwards, there is that cycle of trying to reach to the children and compensate for what society didn't give them, didn't offer their parents by way of health care and support. The, the truth is that tough love works better. And tough love is, yep, it's, it's, it's been a really difficult start for you. And it doesn't matter whether you're talking about kindergartens or third graders or sixth graders or ninth graders or 11th graders. The message is the same. We're going to not worry about what can't be recovered. We are going to focus on what can. And that is really the message. If there's any help we can give here at my institute, we have, as I say, surveys available of instructional materials use. We can help you with remediating and there the word is correct. Curriculum materials that really are weak and need remediating, that is, need to be brought up to speed and how to do that. Any help we can give, this is the most important work frankly that we all face now, given what nature has dealt with us. So I'm going to give five minutes back for more conversation and questions. And thank you so much for your kind attention. I know that it's Monday evening and really this is above and beyond, so many, many thanks.
Thank you very much for those comments, that was really exciting to hear. At this point in time, we're going to turn it over to Kathy Kelly. She's the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Professional Development at the Department of Education. And she's going to pose questions both to you, Dr. Steiner, as well as to Dr. Gant. And these are based on questions that we received when people registered, as well as any questions that were going into the Q and A box as both of our presenters were speaking. If you have questions that haven't already been submitted, if you could just go ahead and put them in now. With that, Ms. Kelly, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you.
Thank you, Whitney, and thank you, Dr. Steiner and Dr. Gant. And thank you to the state board for providing this opportunity for us this evening. I'm going to start with one of the first questions that came into the chat box. And that's for you, Dr. Steiner. What actions can our local education agencies, our IHEs and the state take to support teachers with training now and over the summer so that teachers can be ready to accelerate learning in the fall? And especially what can they do to support new teachers as they come on board?
Great, great question. So first thing is to know what the curriculum is, right? And so that you can pre-support and pre-prepare the teachers for the first units in that curriculum. That's going to depend a little bit on the districts frankly. Some districts will be very clear, they've embraced HQIM or they have a, a good curriculum, district adopted curriculum that they really have focused on. It's hard to judge what the atmospherics are in a particular district and school. But I would urge districts to really get focused on saying to their teachers, this is the curriculum. We all have to row together. We can't have every teacher inventing their own, right? We've got to be collectively responsible. So that's the first thing. The second thing is the same on diagnostics, right? Figure out what, what the district is using by way of diagnostics. And begin to do the work of linking the diagnostic with the curriculum material. That's the hard work, right? So that you know, as a teacher, yep, this is what I'm going to be teaching. But here's where my children are by way of their ability to read texts at this lexile level, right? To read texts at this level vocabulary, to do this conceptual math, right, of these operations. So that they know in advance where they're going to have to scaffold most, where they're going to have to do that acceleration. So that pre-preparation takes all hands on deck, right? It takes the knowledge from the schools and districts, it takes the knowledge. If you have IHE help, that's terrific. But I can't sort of say this too strongly, the more granular it is, the more effective it's going to be.
Great, thank you. I think this is another one that kind of flows into that and would be most appropriate for you, Dr. Steiner. How does accelerated learning, how do accelerated learning strategies differ across grade levels and grade bands? I think you talked about this a little bit, but maybe just a little more detail there.
Absolutely. So you know, when you're learning to read as opposed to reading to learn, for example, and people disagree about exactly where that happens, but we know it when we see it, right? For the learning to read, the phonics, the phonemic awareness, right? The braids of literacy that many teachers now are aware of, thanks to the work of Jeannie Chal and Catherine Snow in the National Reading Panel, right? There, the, the skills tend to be more specifically laid out, right? They're in those annual targets. The challenge of reading to learn is that if you read most state standards and Common Core where they mostly came from, it sort of says, can read the, the text at the right level complexity for the grade level? And then find the main idea, find the evidence, find the, you know, the inferences. And the problem there is that the text, text complexity means a lot of different things, right? It doesn't just mean how long the words are. Obviously, it means how complex the characters are, the plot is, the structure is. And students can get lost in texts that, you know, Play-Doh, right? Comes out at a grade eight complexity level. If you look at a passage in the Republic, well, graduate students are sweating and crying about that text, right? Because it's so hard. So in ELA, when it comes to text, you really need to look, and if you don't have an HQIM available. A lot of this is, it's OER, it's online, it's available. Look at materials from EL, used to be called Expeditionary Learning. Look at Witten Wisdom, look at the support materials for the texts you want to teach. Don't go to Google and find a simplified version of it. That's where remediation comes. In math, right, the, as the skills advance, the, the, the actual number of things you need to be able to do, right? We've seen this from new classrooms analyses, doesn't necessarily multiply, right? There, there are as many skills at fourth grade as there are at seventh grade. It's not that it gets more. It's that you have to think more carefully about what particular confusions your students have, right? Deborah Ball has done a lot of work on this. Trying to understand not just why students are getting it wrong on the diagnostic, but fundamentally taking the time to ask them, what have they missed? What, what is confusing them, right? What, what have they misunderstood? What, get them to report to you. This is, this is what takes the time, right? In the tutoring, in the response to intervention, in that differentiated classroom. It's what we do worst in math in the United States, by the way, is to take the time to figure out where the conceptual confusion is. And that, by the way, is less grade dependent than the ELA problem. Because conceptual confusions occur for third graders and 12th graders. And so it is unpacking that challenge, not just saying to yourself, oh, they failed on, on whole numbers, therefore I'm just going to reteach, right? The, the exercise in whole numbers. They'll fail it again, right? Unless that thing is unpacked and the conceptual misunderstanding is uncovered.
Great. So right along those lines then, do you have some more or more in-depth recommendations for our English learner population and our students with disabilities? There are a few questions that came in during registration around supporting.
First of all, it's a pet peeve of mine that we lump 98% of special needs students as if they're all, right, the same. They're not, they're vastly different. Of course, every teacher knows in what those challenges are, right? So someone on the Asperger's spectrum, somebody in autism, it's a different challenge, right? Very different than other neurological issues or other challenges. So to the remedy, right? Depends on getting that, that knowledge upfront about what the particular advantages may be that that child has. For example, they may be able to process auditory learning far more easily. In which case that storytelling, right? That, that audio book is going to be a hugely effective way in. Whereas giving them the text is just going to be self-defeating, right at the front end. You may want to take them to a smaller portion, that's what I'm saying about grade level. So let's just take The Great Gatsby, right? I mean, you know, the, the, the last three paragraphs of The Great Gatsby are impenetrable to me, right? The dark hills of the Republic rolling on onto the night and rowing faster and reaching out further and goodness knows what else, right? No, that's not the paragraph, right, that those students are going to be asked to master. You're going to give them a paragraph like Nick Carraway's first paragraph where he says that he realizes this advice of his father, that not all students have had the same advantages that he has, which are very telling paragraph. Enable your, your Ls, your, your challenged students access to that passage, right? Tell them it's at that grade level, whatever it is, eighth grade. Give them the sense of understanding mastering it and they will gain the confidence, right, to go to other passages. Do not give them a whole chapter and do not give them something that's Gatsby light, right? That, that was, that is a sort of redone story of Gatsby at a much simpler grade level. So smaller chunks, scaffolded according to the challenges of the particular students, using different modalities as you possibly can. That is time consuming, right? That is the work. But what mustn't be done is to say, this is too difficult. Right? This, this isn't for you, right? You know, yes, you're 14, 15 years old, but I'm going to treat you like you were nine. Children know this. They know it. We run culture surveys of schools out of my institute. That, that we look at students, principals, teachers and parents. The biggest gap on am I being academically challenged? Principals across the country so far, 76% of them give their schools an A or an A minus. 21% of the students tell us they're being academically challenged. 21, on average, right now on our surveys. So believe that these students can do it, but you know, don't give them a huge chunk of something to swallow. Break it down, but don't change the menu.
Great, thank you. One other question along those lines, how can acceleration relate to? We've talked a lot about ELA and mathematics, how can it relate to other content areas?
Yeah, this is great. So a great question. First of all, and I know I'm bashing my head against a, a concrete wall, at least not, you know, in other states. I don't want to talk about Delaware, I'm sure you're different, but elsewhere. Social studies teachers, ELA teachers, art teachers in middle and high school, can we get them to talk to each other? Right? About what, right? Can we have a cross-grade collective conversation about what you're teaching next week? Can we do that before the school year starts so we can look at some echoes across? If we're teaching Captain, Oh My Captain, right, in ELA, maybe we should be looking at the Civil War in our social studies, right, and vice versa. So let's look for cross-reinforcement. Children love to see ideas come back at them from different positions, different domains, different subject matters. I studied that over there, I know about that, right? Are you telling me I'm, I'm looking at this in social studies? I learned that in ELA, right? So that's the first thing, that cross-fertilization. If we were rational, we'd actually have done this as a nation years ago, but don't get me started. But the second thing here is that absolutely the same thing happens. For example, children who are behind in social studies can still respond to a primary source, right? Even if they don't have all the background material. You can prime them to look at this source, right? Movies do this all the time, right? There are movies about the Civil War, right? That do not do three hours of pre-prep. They may, I mean, Star Wars gives you two minutes of rolling title to put you, right? That's accelerated learning. That tells you what you absolutely need to know to watch Star Wars, the next movie, right? Think of what the Star Wars entry point is to that social studies lesson, right? To that science lesson. Same thing, right? In science, you are not going to be able to recover all the unlearned science that wasn't mastered last year, the year before. What must be understood? Is it acceleration, right? So that that marble can go down the slope, right? What needs to be known before the student can do the experiment, before they can study it? That's a, that's a really important question for teachers to ask themselves. And it's not the easiest question to answer. Because you don't have the diagnostics often in those other subjects that we do in the best curriculum in ELA and math. I found this agonizing frankly, myself, to try to do with teachers. I had the privilege of being dean of a big school of education, State School of Education in New York, where we were doing videotaping of all of our 3,000 students learning to be teachers at one time. And I would sit with them and say, what were you trying, we'd stop the tape, right? What were you were trying to do? And they said, well, I was trying to teach the skill. And I said, well, do, did you know what the student understood beforehand? Well, I mean, you know, I didn't have time for that. Right? That, that's the crucial missing link, not to teach it all, but to know what they know.
Very true, thank you. Another question that just came in. You acknowledge that diagnosing student needs and providing the just-in-time supports that is needed to provide access to the grade level instruction is easy to say but difficult to do. Do you have recommendations for how a school or district can create systems?
Yeah, so again, I don't want.
Support for teachers.
Yeah, I don't want to sound facile here and it's just too easy to do so, so I want to be very careful. Ideally, and then we can work back to the real. Ideally, the question is, you've got your school personnel. Can you create time structures whereby acceleration is given a real chance? What I mean by that is, can you enable a division of labor? So that there is in that RTI space, there is in that differentiation space. There is in that preschool moment, in that after-school moment, in that tutoring. There is a structure that is all focused on the same thing, the learning goal for that week. How do you organize your entire resources for that? So for example, if you have student teachers who are doing their practicum, right, in your school, are you using them to help with acceleration? You should be, right? If you've got paras, are you using them? When I say everybody on board for this, I really do mean everybody, right? You, because it's so urgent. Because it's so urgent, given these learning melts after COVID and the pre-existing gaps, the tragic achievement gaps we already inherited. So ideally, you want to, as a school principal, as lead teachers, you're, you're thinking about next year. You know your children are coming in behind, you want to accelerate them. How are you going to organize your school timetable, your bell schedule, right? Your distribution of personnel? So as to maximize the opportunities for acceleration. And that is going to look different depending on local bargaining agreements, right? On what can, this is real world, right? I mean, I, I, I've spent months bargaining with teachers unions in New York. And we, you know, we had some good places and some not so good places. That again, it's not all going to be perfect. But the effort of organizing should start now. Can't stress that too much. If you go in and just sort of give a pep talk and say, you know, be, try to focus on, on getting the kids to grade level. Good luck, you know, you've got some materials, let me know how it goes. Not going to happen. It's not going to happen. This is good old fashioned planning work. Uh, and I know that uh, Dr. Gant and, and others at the state level will be there with resources, can, can help. Clearly, the message is right. I, I do want to say, and no puffery here, I, I work with many states. The plan you have is the best framework I have seen to date on this subject, bar none. And I would say that to any other state. So the framework is there. But the, the help to districts to do this planning, I'm going to put Dr. Gant on notice, right? She, this, this is, this is twenty-four, twenty-four twelve, right? There's a lot to be done.
Absolutely. I think everyone on this call has probably been working twenty-four twelve for at least the last year, probably longer.
I wish it could stop, I really do. I know that in Maryland, where I've served on the state board, you know, and, and here in Baltimore, where we've had the privilege of working with Sonia. It has been a tremendous challenge to stick with the world-class curriculum. I mean, they've gone for Witton Wisdom and Eureka, right? Two fully green-lighted curriculum with children who are three years behind, right? In many, many cases, that, that is courageous. But if, if we can do it in Baltimore, I don't want to say we can do it. If we have the commitment to try to make it work, right? In Baltimore, we can have that commitment everywhere. Because we are one of the two most challenged districts in the United States, right? We have eighty-five percent of our students are not proficient. And we're accelerating, right?
Absolutely. Another question that just came in, the focus on teaching what is most important, and I think this is in reference to the priority instructional content, which we've used a lot in Delaware this year. And we know that that's not intended to be an evergreen document. But the focus on teaching what is most important is, is a very different message than the cover all the standards message that we've been sending for years. So what are your thoughts on this shift and how we help districts move most?
I don't want to undermine any message from your department. So, and we didn't rehearse this. So I'm just going to say my piece, and then if, if, if there's a different view, please listen to them and not to me. As I said in the presentation, I, I do try to be real world. I, I just think, and here's the research. This has nothing to do with COVID, right? Bill Schmidt, two thousand and four, analyzing the third international math and science study. Those were international assessments on which the United States did not do well. He looked at what the major differences in practice were across the world. And what did he find? He found that the United States, without fail, was trying to teach three times as many concepts, three times as many topics, the chapters. There were a hundred and twelve topics in the science textbooks he was looking at, versus thirty in the top performing countries on average, right? We are a mile wide and an inch deep. We are trying to do everything and we're failing, right? Our NAEP results, the gold standard, are within a couple of points up or down, in the case of ELA, as to where they were in nineteen ninety-two. So it isn't working, right? To try to teach everything. I've had this discussion with great minds who produce Witten Wisdom, which we regard as, you know, it's one of the green-lighted uh, ELA curriculum, one of the strongest. And it's tough for them to say, well, okay, maybe three units, not six, right? But COVID, for goodness sake, right? Pre-existing tragic achievements, gaps, for goodness sake. All the evidence is that children love to master something. They love to be absorbed in something, right? Think about the, the passion of a child at play. This is from John Dewey, right? That, that intensity with which they, they get engaged with something. If you give it to them for three minutes and pass it on, that's not learning. That's ice skating, right? Over the surface. So every piece of research I've seen over twenty-five years is telling me the same thing. It's telling me that if, that rigorous material that is of high quality, a deep dosage of that is worth ten times that mile-wide inch deep. I just don't know how else to put it. I mean, there is nowhere else the research can, can push me. And now, sitting at a research university, I'm on a pound to sort of, to report that. It is what, what we know.
And Dr. Steiner, I do want to say that um, you know, we really focused on priority instructional content, even at the beginning of the year. And we talked about the importance of making sure that students had exactly what they needed to be able to access grade level content. And so you're not saying anything in contrast to what we have said at the state. As a matter of fact, I, we put in the, um, in the chat, Digital Delaware, which talks about you can access high-quality instructional material resources, how do you select them? And then guides go through it. Our, our priority instructional content is right on there. And so, um, so we absolutely are in, in tandem with that piece, as well as the, the importance of having other content areas at the table. If you only teach ELA and math, then you don't have, you can't teach nonfiction. You don't have the science and the social studies, the context for, and, and the meaning-making of what you're reading and experiencing, so.
I'm so glad you said that, Dr. Gant, because I did want to say one thing about that. Drilling kids on find the main idea, once they're, you know, old enough to, to read, to learn, is the worst way to get them to do well on a find the main idea, right? If I say the silly mid-off missed the consequences of the googly, you can look at that sentence, all of you, for ten years and never tell me what the main idea is. Every ten-year-old in England knows it immediately. Why? Because they know cricket, right? They've got the background knowledge. The main idea is no problem. Reading achievement gaps are knowledge gaps, are background knowledge gaps. Science, social studies, the arts are crucial in building that background knowledge so that children, when they see a passage of reading, have a clue what it's about, particularly on our terrible ELA assessments, sorry, which give them bits of text they've never seen before. So there's no advantage having studied any book deeply. And then tells them to decode it, right? To find the main idea. The only difference between middle-class students and underprivileged students is not drill. It's that the middle-class students have had those holiday supports and home supports and library supports, such that they have an exponentially greater chance of understanding what the passage is actually about. So we are the only country I know, sorry about this, that creates a class system of subjects, where ELA and math are somehow first class, science and social studies are second class, and the arts and foreign languages and everything else is third class. No other country does this. So for you math, for you science teachers, social studies teachers, biz ed teachers, arts teachers, I directed education at the National Endowment for the Arts because I believe that the non-teaching of the arts is catastrophic, for, especially for underprivileged children. It all matters.
Thank you so much. Dr. Gant, I have one question for you before we close. Um, and that's how can community-based organizations most effectively contribute to our accelerated learning strategy?
And so we have been, um, it sounds like we've been doing a little bit of a road trip to talk to different organizations about what we're offering through our accelerated learning plan. So at the beginning, I shared what our strategy was. I shared Zern Math, I shared um, the ELA piece, um, the high dosage tutoring. And so what we're offering to community partners is that we will provide that tutoring training. And Dr. Steiner really raised this during his presentation today, how it's important to have trained tutors um, in front of our students and to have coherence and cohesiveness. So what we're doing at, in summer school, we'd like for that to happen in um, our community centers. And so we are willing to train the staff of those community centers on Zern. And so there is an opportunity to do that. I'll put in the chat, um, the interest form, so that you all are able to reach out if you are a part of a community organization, or you can just email us, and we will certainly follow up with you. But that is our, our way of trying to bring cohesion around the state for what students, whether they are going to community programs or whether they go into summer school, we want to provide those equitable access opportunities across the state. And so we're providing that training um, for Zern. And so if that's something that you have a community organization and you're interested in, please let us know. We're training in June, and we'd love to sign you up. So, so thanks for that question.
And I just wanted to add that if anyone would like to talk further at the district level, you know, about any of the approaches we've been talking about. I know that the department has my email and, you know, please don't hesitate. It's, it's very easy, it's all lowercase, d.stainer@jhu.edu. D.stainer@jhu.edu. But again, really want to say, it's, it's your work that is absolutely crucial. We, we are here to offer what we know from the research, from best practices, from our own experiences. But I just salute the work you do every day, and it's never, ever, ever been more vital than it is right now.
Now, thank you for, for that. And actually, I wanted to spend, I know we're approaching six-thirty, but just a couple of minutes, Dr. Gant, if you could just cover sort of next steps as we move forward.
Absolutely. And so, um, right now, we're at the, at the place where we're finalizing our, um, our vendors. We're determining who needs which, how many seats for licenses for districts and charters. They have completed their interest forms, they were due last week, and so most have done that already. We're providing follow-up details for districts, and we're organizing those professional learning experiences. The districts and charters right now are discussing plans for accelerating their students with their teams. So what their district plan is going to be, um, which is that core action for. They are also discussing ways in which they can leverage their SIR funds to complement the resources that we're providing. So if we're providing the resources, then they're looking at, do they pay for the teacher's stipends? Do they pay for completion of PL? Do they pay summer pay? And so they're looking at how that will work for, um, for them. You can go to the next slide. And then we, as I shared just a second ago, we are, um, have been talking to community organizations that are interested in signing up for um, that tutoring training that we share. And we also would love for those organizations to assist in communication efforts with parents and community members to support these acceleration efforts. And so hopefully, there's something that you gained this evening that will help you um, provide that information. Or at least um, you can direct them our, our way, and we're happy to, to answer any questions that they have. And so those really are our next steps.
Great, thank you very much. I mean, I'd like to personally thank both Dr. Gant and Dr. Steiner for being here with us tonight. Certainly, as you noted, this is five o'clock on a Monday. So thank you, six-thirty now, uh, for joining us and sharing. That was really excellent. And I know I'm worried about things to think about and the next steps that we've laid out. We had a lot of attendees on the line, which is also really fantastic that there were so many people engaged. So thank you, the two of you, everyone who joined tonight to listen. And there is a survey in the bottom in the chat box. And if anyone uh, could fill that out, we'd appreciate that, just thinking about the value of the session. It's always really useful to have feedback to make sure that the things we bring to you are things that are useful. I know from my perspective, I would say absolutely tonight. So we appreciate everyone's time tonight. If you could fill out that survey and have a great evening.
Thank you so much.